Could you please call roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Mayor Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
Thank you. Study session items, the first one on the agenda is public comments. Are there, is there anybody out in the audience who would like to make a public comment? Public comments are limited to five minutes. Your letters will, letters are not publicly read out loud. I don't see anybody in the audience. Presentation of the annual, the annual State of the Streets Report by city staff.
Good evening, councilmembers.
Evening.
It's that time of year again, State of the Streets. We'll be giving a brief presentation here on 2021, just kind of a snapshot of the work we did and also talking about upcoming work. I think everybody is, knows Lucas. Him and I will be sharing his presentation. I'll start out and Lucas will finish up. Lucas has spent a lot of time on construction sites these last three or four years on a lot of these projects. He's familiar with them and he's also involved in the design process on the ones coming up. So I guess to start out, did everybody get a copy of the State of the Streets pamphlet?
Yes.
So we can, we're kind of going to be hitting on some of the items in that with this presentation. So we'll, we'll go through this and if we have questions, I guess we could stop any time to, if you want to ask or we can wait to the end and discussion on it as well. So really on this first page here, this, the graphs you're seeing are for all of the streets and I think everybody's familiar, but every fall we do PESA ratings. It's a pavement, pavement surface and value, value. Evaluation rating. I apologize. So every, in the fall, our, the crews go out, Brandon and it's been Kathy in the past. That may change in the future, but they go out and rate the roads. It's a similar system so that it's based on a visual observation and all the roads are rated from one to 10. And so that happens every year and that gives us data that we can start following to start tracking the conditions of the streets in the city. All the streets right now, 53% of them are in fair to good condition with 47% being in poor condition and that is a combination of both major and local. And I'll spend a little bit of time here talking about major and local streets separately and that'll also give you a little, little insight to why the trends are what, where they are. So you can see that the trend is we have on the last year and the good area have gone down. The fair streets have gone up and poor has actually gone up a little bit, a little flatter. And again, I'll talk about that as we go through each one of the streets. So major and, major and local. So the first thing I want to talk about is major streets. And we have about 58% of the streets are in the good to fair condition. It's about 11 miles and as for PESA ratings that are five to 10. And that leaves about 42% are about eight miles that are, that have a poor rating. In 2021, there was really only one project we did. It was Eighth Street Reconstruction and that was a full reconstruction project and the oh, I'm sorry. And so that really all our resources for the major streets went into reconstruction. So there was money set aside for crack sealing that we did in 20, last year, but the majority went into improving Eighth Street. And so what happens is those remaining streets, it's another year on their lifecycle, they deteriorate a little bit, some of the PESA ratings drop off. So that's really the driver is our funds were into a reconstruction project and there wasn't a lot of preventive maintenance, crack sealing or light rehab, which is our micro surface or mill and fills. We can cover a lot more ground with those and instead our money went into one, one street, which, which drove that down. It also had an effect on over, our average PESA rating as a whole is kind of been driven down a little bit in the last year because of reconstruction type work. The local streets, similar. We did a lot more work on Jackson, Van Buren and Jefferson, which was really driven by a water main project. So a utility project was driving the work on those streets. We also did some work on Olga Street, which was actually a rehab, a heavy rehab or a mill and fill. The same thing still, we had the same effect on the local streets where we put a lot of money into, you know, a certain amount of segments. We had about six blocks we did reconstruction on and another block of that rehab. So besides cracks, outside of crack sealing, there was no other work done on the remainder of the system. And so again, those seen another year deterioration. Some of those had PESA ratings go from good to fair or even from fair to poor. And that is why there's a tendency for us to, to move from good to fair, fair to poor this, in the last year. It's because our focus is on some of these main streets, a reconstruction of streets. So summarizing a little bit. So all the, the entire work we did was 0.13 miles of major street were reconstructed and 0.36 miles of local streets were reconstructed. There was also, I didn't, we're going to talk a little bit about it, the bridge, which is on a major street, was, is also included in that work we were doing so that those dollars are not reflected in these here. That's approximately another million dollars and about 95% of that million dollars was matched by MDOT. We had a grant for that, so we only were paying about 5% of the cost of that project. We invested about one and a half million dollars into projects last year. Of that, because we did water main work, about $950,000 was, was invested in the streets. And that's, and that's also the same amount roughly that came out of the street fund. So a lot of it was street work with some of it going towards water main. And as I mentioned before, that's the, you know, that's, these trends are really being driven by the fact that we're focusing on, you know, pretty specific areas. You can look at the map and see all the areas we did crack sealing in green and those blue areas that were, we did street work. And because it was reconstruction, we can't do a lot of miles. It's, they're short, you know, we only did about seven, eight blocks worth of work. I think everybody's very familiar with these and I, and if I recall right, is there, there's some training possibly for the councilmembers on, so I think you might've received some potential training in asset management related. We do asset management on everything, you know, our utilities and streets, but we have two really things we repeat over and over. We're dealing with street asset management and we're dealing with the transportation improvement program or plan or tip. And just to hit on those real quick, the asset management plan is really a bigger, a bigger overarching kind of approach or philosophy. And in 2013 is when the city started this and Jeff started an asset management plan. Was, it was written up, was provided to the state, actually received awards. And, you know, that was really kind of the, a good takeoff starting point. And the, it's really about the approach to streets and in a really simple sense, it's focusing on, you know, doing the right, the right fix at the right time, at the right, in the right place. It's not worst is first. So we don't, we're not picking the worst street in the city and going and fixing it. And the concept being is if you're spending your money on mill and fill, you can do, you know, three times as much as a reconstruct project in terms of length. Or if you're doing a micro surface, you can do 10 times as much. And the, the idea is you're really trying to extend the life overall of your entire system. So roads that are in fair shape, if you invest into rehab, you can extend their lives. Instead of kind of blowing it all in one place when you reconstruction. So that's overall arching, you know, asset management. And then the tip is a, a pretty specific targeted document where we list every street we're going to work on for the next three or four years. And we talk a lot about that. It's based on PESA ratings. It's based on utilities we're working on. We're using GIS and it's just a tool that's in constant, constantly being updated. The map here shows really since we've kind of brought into play the tip and there was some ad hoc, ad hoc committee for streets, we started utilizing it. This is some of the work that's been done and also projecting out a few years of what's coming up. So with, with that, I'll turn it over to Lucas to talk about kind of what's, what's ahead.
Good evening, council. So like Sean said, I'm just going to talk about the 22, 2022 planned street work here in the city. As you can see the list, it's not, oh, what happened there? As you can see on the list, there's no short for projects this summer. So I'll just go down the list, starting with the Quincy Cleveland Local Street Reconstruction Project, which includes all utilities being replaced, the sanitary sewer, water main and the storm sewer. The next project would be the 12th Street Heavy Rehab Project, which includes widening, crushing and shaping and adding the pedestrian crossing and safety applications. The Memorial Drive Reconstruction Project, just on the other side of the bridge. Fifth Avenue down by the Coast Guard is going to be a mill and fill with the flood mitigation project. And then down on the south side of town by Morton Salt, the big conveyance project that got pushed back a little bit to this spring, going into the summer. That's going to consist of all utilities being replaced from sanitary sewer, storm sewer and water main. Another planned maintenance aspect to the roads this year will be the preventative maintenance crack sealing, which is planned to occur on all of the PESA ratings rated seven and above. And in summary, the reconstruction projects will result in 13 blocks of, of city streets. The heavy rehab projects will consist of six blocks of city streets and the preventative maintenance crack sealing will result in 365 blocks, which is roughly 49% of the city. So as you can see on this map, this is what Sean was talking about, the forecasted tip map for the next three, four years. Does that mean? This thing's really touchy. So as you can see on the map, it just shows, you know, the, the work that we have from the legend there in 2022 showing Quincy Cleveland, Memorial Drive, the Maple Street Bridge right now, conveyance project on the south side and, and 12th Street. 2023, as of right now, we show Lake Shore, South Lake Shore Drive, the beach loop. And we show on this map Memorial Drive, just, just so we can show it visually. And then in 2024, as of right now, we, we are showing over on 14th Street and Maywood Avenue being done. And in 2025, we, we show Washington Street for, plan for project along with Lincoln Street, so. And as Sean mentioned earlier, the transportation improvement plan is definitely subject to change. We're, we're always working on that throughout the, throughout the weeks. We figured it would be a good time to include some of these photos from the Maple Street Bridge project because most of it's kind of behind the curtains. So as you can see, some of the painting that's being done there.
Yeah, it's various stages. There's, you know, there's primers and zinc coatings that are put on and then there's a final, final painting. It's hard to see in there, but you don't actually see the final blue painting that's going on. It's going to be a, it will be the same blue as it was before. There's portions of the, of the bridge that we don't need to paint and so there's kind of a matching issue. I think our, our bridge engineers, they didn't want it to look like fruit loops with different colors. We did talk to, we went back and looked at all the historical photos to make sure we're consistent and we're using as close as we can to the same MDOT paint that was used previously.
So did we ever do anything, we talked about adding some lights to that, like that bridge, did we ever do anything with that project or that just kind of dead end?
It was, I don't think it's necessarily dead end, but we couldn't get it into this project and it wasn't necessarily a participating item. And so we, we've talked about it, we, we couldn't get it in to this project. So it's, it's something that can be discussed, you know, I'm sure down the, down the road is, there's nothing that's, it'd stop us from doing it, just MDOT wasn't going to run it.
So and then just
Can I ask a quick question?
All right.
Couple of screens back. The 12th Street project, if it's something, something else get taken off for 2022 to do that project or was it always going to be on there?
I don't believe any Did anything get taken off or did it just?
Because I know we did that study for the school, so I'm just wondering if something else got taken off the project for 2022?
Yeah, we, in the, the transportation improvement plan that's included in the adopted budget for this year, we had forecasted doing the mill and fill on Washington Street and the utility upgrades there. However, we did not get the participation from MDOT that we had expected and had been somewhat promised by them. So we couldn't afford to do it this year. So we, in, in our anticipation was get that street upgraded before the Memorial Bridge Project happened, so it was fixed prior to that. Without the state's participation, the next best thing is to move it till after that project and all that heavy traffic. So when that road gets damaged from the detour route, then we're going to, we're planning in 2025, doing a mill and fill and then the state has, so that they would look at some participation in that later. So by moving that project forward three years, then it opened up the finance, financing perspective to move 12th Street up a year and then also address the safety factors that were studied this summer.
So are we still doing Memorial Drive?
Yes.
This year?
Okay. This year.
Jeff, just, we're only doing half of 12th Street, that right? Whenever we're on the Tamarack. Does that part need to be done later or is that just deferred or what, or is it good enough up there once it's?
It's, it was previously done with the school project and that's got full.
With the Cedar Streets of the project.
Yeah, and it's it's good at that point, so we'll be going up to that.
We're going to meet it.
We're going to meet it, yeah. We're filling in that last gap. I mean, literally when we're done with this, we'll have the full major street section from the highway all the way to Tamarack with curb and gutter and
Bike lanes.
Bike lanes.
Thank you.
I got one more question on 2024. Is, is there a reason why there's like a little project there? Are you keeping that open for something or is that like a big project that's going to take a long time? I can't tell.
So a couple of things that kind of drive that project are, right now it, it has concrete underneath it, so there's a lot of removal cost with that whole hill. And then also upgrading it to major streets, I think, and
Plus we've got a developer, Howler Corporation, has pledged $200,000 towards the upgrade of that project. So that's within the timeframe that he had pledged the money.
Okay.
So just with any of these things, there's, there's a tremendous amount of factors that go into play. So we're glad to have, have you ask those questions and help you understand it.
Now I'm done.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
It's a big deal within the company, the funding and trying to leverage money really pushes us all over the map. And utilities on top of that complicated and all of the water mains that are in poor shape or something.
And just, just to recap, that was, was going to be kind of one of the next bullets too, is, is talking about the leveraging, leveraging of the, of the dollars that are being spent. But just to recap from, from what Sean was talking about, in 2021, a half a mile of reconstruction projects were completed with utility improvements. Roughly 950,000 of, of the 1.5 million was, was out of the street funds and going back into the streets. And then about a half a million was incorporated from the utility costs. And then 2022, as, as laid out from earlier, is planned on having 1.6 miles of rehab and reconstruction projects with utilities. Out of that project investment, there's $7 million being put out there for the projects. That includes all the water main upgrades, the sanitary sewer upgrades and the storm sewer upgrades. And then out of that 7 million, there's $3 million of it is directly related to the street investment. And out of the $3 million, 1.7 million is out of the street fund. So as you can see, a lot of those dollars are kind of being leveraged with the street projects and the utility projects to make, make everything work. So going back to the asset management approach that Sean was talking about earlier, it's basically a lot more expensive to do reconstruction than it is to maintain the roads, to perform light rehab and to do heavy rehab. So I don't think I need to expand on that anymore. I think everybody understands that. So we just wanted to lay everything out there. So if anybody has any questions or we want to discuss anything, that was it.
Is the truck route considered a main street?
The, for the conveyance project?
No, just like the whole route on
It is a major street.
Yeah, it's a major, yeah.
Do you ever get MDOT funding for upgrading that or?
The only MDOT funding that's available is our Small Urban and the Small Urban, well, there's a couple of different funds, but the MDOT money only funds major streets with the exception of a CATB, which is a new fund for local streets. So the truck route has been completely redone in the past 20 some years by a combination of sewer separation projects. And then Fifth Street, Casusco, Eighth Street, Main Street, 13th and Main Street were all done with MDOT grant funds. All of those segments were in three different, three different pieces.
But within 20 years?
Those evolved, yeah, about a 20 year period.
Okay.
So the answer is yes, there's different, there's different funds available for those. The Small Urban comes to the city about once every six years and we get $385,000 towards that. Category F is to upgrade major streets that have a direct link to the trunk line or US31. So we've been successful in getting those from time to time. I think the last two applications we submitted, we were not successful. Category A, which is tied to job creation, but you've really got to create a lot of jobs before you get any real money from the state. But every time there's a new facility, factory, anything that, that's built, we're always analyzing where we can take advantage of those opportunities.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the last category A did was the Veterans Oak Grove around the industrial park loop.
Yeah.
Because of the, the job creation for the wind spires, the windmills that had started up there.
So you don't think there's anything that we can do for the truck route this coming year or the next couple of years?
It's not in the proposed transportation improvement plan. The next segment that really needs work is Main Street Hill.
Yeah. That's what I was getting at.
That was actually the first city street I paved when, back in 1995, I think. So it's been quite some time.
Yeah, because at the bottom of that hill, it almost feels like it's going to cave in.
Yeah.
What is the life of a street? I mean, how long does it last before you have to do something to it?
Yeah, fully reconstructed street, you know, you look, ideally you want to get 20, 25 years out of it. It's, you know, brand new and that's full sand sub bays, gravel, you know, full section of, you know, pavement. It's well drained and everything's working out. The biggest thing with a street is you're trying to keep water out of it. And so you want it well drained, get the water out of there, when it cracks, seal them, because that water's not working the pavement and freezing and thawing.
In Michigan, if you can get 14, 15 years out of pavement, you're doing very, very well. But you're going to start seeing cracks in that 10 to 12 year period.
Yeah.
And like Sean just said, that's when you have to crack seal it. That's when you've got to do some of those more inexpensive treatments to try to preserve it as long as you can. Because once it gets to the point where you've got extensive cracks and it begins hot holding, there's not much you can do to it except remove it and repave it again. So all of the streets that the city has done reconstruction for at least 30 years have good gravel base belong. And so like Washington is a very good example. That has a very good gravel base. About 20 years ago, the pavement was milled off and repaved. You can see the condition in after 20 years. But you don't have to rebuild that road ever again. We simply have to, to mill off that pavement and put it back. So as we upgrade these roads, they're set up for the future, but they're very expensive to do that.
Yeah.
And, and one of the finance director's favorite examples, and we actually started asset management in 2008. Right before that, MDOT repaved Memorial Drive as part of a bridge detour when they were going to work on Memorial Bridge. They did a mill and fill, so they ground off the asphalt, they paved it back. Within three years, it was full of cracks again because the, the base wasn't upgraded and it's kind of very soft grade, or a base, it's made up of all kinds of different materials. When we do it this summer, it'll be completely removed with new gravel and then new asphalt.
Seems like an uphill battle you guys have here. A lot of work.
You, you will never win this battle in, in northern Michigan with the weather unless, unless there is a massive amount of funding, massive. And one of the things that I wanted to point out on the slides, when, when the engineers were talking about the utility money going towards streets and then the street money?
Yeah.
That's only towards the street portion. Utility costs are up above and beyond that. But when we bury a pipe, you have to dig a trench to bury that pipe. So as we replace the utility, the utility's covering a portion of the road that's above it. And then the balance of it is what the street fund is, is covering. So that's one of the ways that we're leveraging utility upgrades with the street funds and trying to get more done as well.
Yeah, Washington would be a good example of that. We're going to get a grant for a third of the cost. We're going to, the Wash, the water main will probably pay for another third or so of the cost and the remainder would be out of the street fund. We'll get the full road done, but a third of it will be paid by the street fund.
So in 2021, were there any projects that were postponed or set aside that you weren't able to get to? And if so, what was the reason for that?
So the, the answer is yes, and it was the Seventh Street and Ramstall Street where the sewer conveyance was supposed to go underneath. And that was delayed because of permitting for the railroad crossing. And, and then once that permitting came on, came to us, then getting the contractor to fit it back in their schedule and to get here. So that pushed that project back about three months. However, three months beyond what we had expected. However, the contractor still believes that they'll be able to finish that project within the contracted timeframe, so it'll be done by July this year or next, yeah, this year.
Yeah, the wastewater portion will be in late the October with the
And, and that's, that's actually a perfect example. That pipe is a 4 foot diameter pipe that's 15 feet deep. So to bury that pipe, it has to impact the entire roadway. So that entire roadway is a function of, you know, being removed and replaced is a function of the utility costs and there's no street funds going into those, those two project, two, excuse me, those two streets.
Are they on schedule for the Maple Street Bridge stuff? I mean, is it going to get done on time?
Well, the painting portion is actually a little ahead of schedule right now, so they're in good, good shape. The next thing's going to be weather. So there's weather dependent work that's concrete work and, and approach work that has to wait till the weather allows for that, so, but we're in good shape right now.
So from the availability of a contractor, is there, is there more that we could be doing if you had the funds or are we pretty much? Or are we pretty much meeting the ability for our contractors to be able to do work? Or how close are we?
So that's a very, it's an excellent question with a very complex answer. If we had more money, we would be doing more work. But what has happened in the state of Michigan is there's been a lot more funding into streets, street upgrades and roads. And even now we're starting to see more funding for infrastructure in general. The construction industry hasn't grown to meet that new funding. So what we're seeing is the cost of each project is going up between twenty to forty percent. So even though we had more funding coming in, we're not getting much more done because the cost of the project is equal to how much more money we got. And I just had my two sucker conversations with MDOT officials in the past two weeks and they said all of their projects are about thirty to forty percent over their normal estimates just across the board. So they're actually having to reduce projects and push them out in their transportation improvement plans. Saying it's going to take some time for that funding to become stable enough where then people decide to expand.
Really into the business?
We're starting to see a little bit. There's a lot more smaller paving contractors that are branching off from the bigger ones and starting up, but it's going to take time for them to get up to speed and be able to be competitive on the bigger projects.
Is Fourth Street going to find its way into the street improvement plan for '26?
Well, we haven't finalized the transportation improvement plan, and that's one of the projects that we keep talking about because we've got desire to upgrade the water main. I mean, we all know that that's a very narrow street, but the water main is going to drive that. And there's just a lot of demand on those projects right now, so. The other thing that didn't get mentioned is we've been working with Manistery Public Schools. When we went through the traffic study on 12th Street for the middle school, high school, we also took that opportunity to recognize that Kennedy School is going to be going through a lot of renovate, renovation, new parking, new drop-off. So there's going to be a lot of new traffic patterns there. And we've been working with the school and their design team the city has to look at how pedestrian flow, how we anticipate pedestrian flow to occur, but also how the traffic patterns to occur. And it's been going very, very well, very cooperative. They've actually adjusted and changed some of the layouts based on our comments. But one of the things that they're planning is Sixth Street, if you can picture that, it's like sixty, seventy feet of pavement. And while that seems like it's a good thing, it's a very bad thing for traffic, it's a very bad thing for students, people tend to park, drop off, wait for somebody to come out, and so you've got cars sometimes three, four wide. What the school wants to do is to eliminate the parking on the south side of the street, maintain the parking that's on the north side, but then narrow that street up so it's only at the major street standards. And they can't use the bond money once they get out, or once they get inside the right-of-way on the street portion, they can do sidewalk work. So we've asked for estimates from the engineers, had to be the same civil engineer that's working with them. But we asked for some cost estimates on what it would take to upgrade the two blocks of Sixth Street. And I don't know if there's going to even be an opportunity to fund that within the timeframe that the school does their work, but we're exploring that.
And it would have to be on the school's side. You'd have to push forward on the school's side because, you know, you have homeowners on the other end of that street, you can't, what are you going to do with them? You can't.
That's exactly what we're doing with fixing the north side and then it would be showing the south side.
Yeah, towards the school. So you would think that the school would be able to throw something into at least that portion of it.
That's been our discussion, yeah. The school and then to put more green space.
Yeah.
Are they going to use that back field now, once they tear the school down, in that field, your football field, are they going to use that for parking?
We have a site plan.
Yeah, we're going to do that under maps, but I can bring it up now if you'd like.
You want later?
Yeah, we can wait.
Okay.
Well, I did get two calls from residents today, they're excited about Quincy being done, so.
We've got, it's out for bid, just so you know, it'll be coming to council probably within three weeks. So we've got a pre-bid meeting tomorrow on it and got three contractors. This is going back to your question there, is we, there's limited contractors locally too, and a lot of them have work already. So we're banging on doors to get contractors to be in our Manistery Pre-Bid Meeting tomorrow and hoping to at least have three, three to four bidders if we're lucky. I mean, and that would be, four would be ecstatic, it's been really tough to get.
Prime example is every fall, during the year, we keep a list of all the road openings for utility patches and so forth. We take that whole list, we bid it out. We pay about $160 to $180 a ton to pave those patches. My little bid this asphalt was $2,000 a ton. We did not pave those patches yet, so we're going to bid it out again in the spring, but they're just so busy right now that.
Those are the ones you put the coal patches in?
So we went back and coal, we coal patched the major streets, yeah.
Sean, my recollection is the whole cost of the Quincy and.
Cleveland.
Cleveland reconstruction and the ball utilities is $1.2 million. And the only reason I point that out is because we've got funding streams coming from water, we've got funding streams coming from sewer and from streets. But you can't do that type of a project without building up resources over a number of years. That's probably the single biggest street project, except for the conveyance, that we've done in my tenure here, just in terms of that segment costing that much. So these are big projects, they take a lot of planning and need a lot of resources to make them be able to come together.
In the meantime, the rest of the streets are getting older.
Yeah, I mean, the thing about that, you've got forty-eight miles of streets, so if we impacted a half-mile this year, that's forty-seven and a half miles that we lost a year of that, say eighteen-year life, twenty-year life. The trends can easily go the other way fast.
Any chance of getting money like we did on 12th Street from Maple to Cypress? With that government money that we can only use for major.
That was about, that was about $1.2 million project and we got $375,000 on that one from Small Urban, which is a six-year. So our next cycle, we're planning to put it on Washington Street.
Because Quincy's going to cost us a million.
One thing going through these tip meetings is we have a lot more needs than we do funding. Like you said, we're hoping to get more infrastructure money coming down, but the reconstructions are very expensive. I think kind of making sure we're doing the crack sealing and some of these asset management recommendations can help delay that big investment that is reconstruction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, discussion on Smoke on the Water Forest Festival event.
City manager, way of gamble.
Thank you, Mayor. So back in November, we started receiving correspondence from Salt River, I'm sorry, Salt City Rock and Blues, Mr. Bob Ogilvy, interested in having an event during the Forest Festival, which is, would kind of have sale and consumption of marijuana as part of kind of a music. Also, kind of having an alcohol event on that Saturday, July 2nd. Just kind of talking with our city attorney about it, there's a couple of approvals that would be needed from the city. One to allow the consumption of marijuana in, you know, have an event in the city and another one to have it in a public, on public land. So kind of going back and forth, talking about their plan, getting some more information from them, and some of my one-on-ones with council members, it seemed like there was some for, some against. And I think just before they spend a lot of time and effort, I just want to kind of bring this up, see if it's something that council would be interested in or, you know, and I can understand wanting more information too, but I think at some point we need to start talking about this, we're already in February. So just wanted to kind of, I think I sent this along, maybe we can bring up the other question and answer. Chief Glass is quarantining, so he couldn't be here today. I think he had some, you know, just kind of the concerns, we can find out more about how they planned a section off the area. They talked about having it over at Douglas Park, the Lions Pavilion area. But I think in general, is this something that I think council is interested in? It sounds like they're going to be going forward with their state event license, kind of regardless of if the city does this event, but they are interested. It sounds like Authentic 231 would be involved. So I just wanted to kind of get some feedback from council, see if there's any questions that I can kind of take back, or we could even invite them in to do a more thorough presentation on this.
Well, I'm always thinking about the potential liabilities that this could create for us. So I'm curious if there's been any other events like this in the state of Michigan, especially in a town of our size. I understand they're going to hire their own law enforcement, that'll help. I just, when I think about the consumption of alcohol argument versus a consumption of marijuana, I think about the fact that a person can go into a bar and have a couple of drinks, and sometimes they overindulge. But there's some liability on the server and the bar itself in case they have an accident. To me, and when, I think the primary purpose of smoking pot is to get high. So I do wonder, and I just need a little bit more education as to how you control a bunch of people who are, you know, have had a good time, they've smoked pot and they want to get in their cars and they want to go home. That part of it is keeping me up at night a little bit.
Interesting, I, you know, I did talk to Chief Glass about this a while back and I'm paraphrasing, but he says, you know, he's never had to wrestle a marijuana smoker to the ground, but he's done it several times with alcohol. And I think it's, it is kind of for us, you know, we're in for a penny, we're in for a pound. These are legitimate businesses, they're good community sponsors, they do a lot, they've been forthright, forthcoming, and as far as I understand, there has not been any increase in any crime or issues involved with the sale since we've started. We are reaping the profits as well as the state. And, you know, again, I know that when Salt City Rock and Blues puts on any event, they always try to make sure that they have free transportation available. In other words, they contract with the Manistee Dial Ride to be able to provide free transportation to and from the event, to be able to preclude having issues with people driving. Because they do plan on having alcohol as well.
I could read that, yes, thank you. I just, I want more information, period, about how to handle it.
I would like them to come in and, I mean, talk to us. I think that they do a great job of, you know, stepping up with stuff for the city and, you know, pay for a lot of things and sponsor a lot of things and, I mean, there's no reason why they can't come in and explain to us what they want to do. I mean, people are walking around smoking marijuana all the time anyway, so, I mean, we're not policing them, so I say they can come in and, you know, give us their presentations, say what they want to do and.
And I think they could give us a little bit, they could give us a lot more detail about the insurance, and then also, I think that there have been several other events, even in smaller towns, even local to us, since they've allowed for social use of marijuana.
Let me say this, though. I patrolled and I did fight with people using marijuana, so don't, I mean, just because he hasn't had a problem with it and it just started in Manistee, but I've had problems where I had to wrestle with these people, so they don't impress me. The next thing I want to bring up is the insurance. Yep, they can, in their deal, they say they'll take responsibility, but I've talked to lawyers who say, even though it's parties taking responsibility, you cannot give up that we can't be sued by somebody if something happens, so remember that.
Well, how is it really any different than a beer tent shenanigans that go on on a regular basis? I, I'm just curious. I mean, we let that happen, with that alcohol we drank there and people get drunk and crazy and do whatever. Are we not liable then? Or so that's the same thing, right? So there's really no difference, is that right? Am I right? I don't know. This is, I mean, it's just different.
Yeah, I think Chief Glass is kind of concerned about, you know, when you have that enclosed area for the alcohol, it might be a little easier to kind of do smoking outside of that area. And enforcement's going to be something we have to look at and how we do that, if this event happens.
Yeah, I would be interested in hearing what they have to say in their presentation and then to have Chief Glass here and see what his plan is.
I'm the last one to speak, so I will say I'll listen to what they got to say, but I'm currently, I'm not in favor of it and I would, I'm not, my comfort level will be low, so I may be a minority, which is not uncommon, but I'm, that's where I'm at with. But I'll listen to what they got to say.
Happy to listen. Can they define some answers for these questions?
Great. Well, thank you for the feedback, I will let them know and we'll schedule something.
Bill Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. So I sent this out with the packet, was, these were some of the items that the city staff put together, some potential projects. Couple things, there's some additional lines in this where there's potentially other funding sources. I think, as we mentioned, there's probably, there's going to be additional infrastructure money, we're not exactly sure how that's going to be distributed yet. Let's talk about formula, maybe with the Act 51 to come through. So we'll know more about that in the coming months. And I think this is a good topic to go through during the budget discussion, but I think in general, while we kind of go through thinking about these, I think leveraging these funds, there's one for, you know, we're looking at doing that trust fund grant for the North River Walk. If we increase the match a little bit, we'll get more points. So I think making those kind of, just, you know, using this money to get potentially more money for something, I think is kind of a good use of it. There's, I think, three at the bottom of this, we talked about the, you know, using home demolition, putting in $10,000 a year for that, the Housing North position, $20,000 a year, and then potentially the, increasing the Chamber of Commerce allocation every year. So those are kind of ones that we, I guess was talked about in the previous budget cycle.
I have a question about the BSNA cloud software upgrade for $110,000. If you're a Realtor, you're pretty familiar with that system, so, or if you're on Board of Review, you've certainly heard a lot about it. So I'm just wondering, you know, it's a pretty big price tag, and are they going to increase fees for users when they go on it?
So I think within five years, BSNA is probably going to force all their customers to go to their cloud. So they're rolling it out. As Bill mentioned, there's other columns that have other funding sources and we would split this up amongst the utility funds and some of the other enterprise funds and the general fund. So that's, that would be the total cost, but that's certainly not all coming out of ARPA dollars. None of these necessarily are coming out of, all out of ARPA dollars, some of them could be, but there's other columns. So that's just something on there because it's an opportunity to maybe help to fund that and relieve some of the funding requirements from other. and relieve some of the funding requirements from other city funds. And I think you'll see that in a lot of these. It's just things that are out there that have come up, and that might be a use of that, particularly now that it can be used for any governmental services.
Has this list been prioritized at all? Or is it just randomly 1 through 99, or whatever the numbers are?
So we did have, we did have some, I think, we had some that were kind of considered higher priority, but this is still a draft at this point, so I wouldn't say this is by any means complete. But I wanted to kind of share this with council. We talked about a couple, I think it was the last study session. The nice thing is, it's, it's pretty open in terms of, I think it was any, basically, our entire amount can be used as a government would use their funds. So there aren't the restrictions that we thought that, that lost revenue, the ability to use the funds in any way that a local government does. We're, we're able to do that with our entire allocation. And we could very easily spend this all on roads, which is definitely needed as well. So these are just kind of some ideas. As you can see, I think we've put on a list, I think we had 1 million so far, which is obviously 1.2 million on this list. And I just wanted to, we're still sorting through this, prioritizing it, seeing what strategic goals each one matches up with. As you mentioned, there's other funding sources for some of these items, and you write priorities. I did kind of mention, if any council member wants to put something on here, we can start matching them up. But I think this is all going to be kind of worked through during the budget process. But I just wanted to share this with, with council, and I'd see if there's any input or something feels missing.
What did daycare bill about?
That was just kind of an idea we're having, but it's not, that's, that's definitely outside of the realm, and that would be something we'd have to identify more, we'd have to get more information about that.
I'm looking at the additional harm reduction and drug addiction item that you have toward the bottom. And I, I've been to a couple Zoom meetings about this. And since we're going to have an office here in town or on 31, I don't think people understand that drug addition, addiction is, you can have some medical coverage on drug addition for recovery, but it only is like for 90 days. And really, to become less addicted and successful, you, you need the whole family environment, whole family in counseling, as well as probably about a year. So it was interesting information. Josh was at that meeting as well. I think if we, we all put some money, including the county, into this, just to help them along, that would be good. And I, I'm not thinking a huge amount, but I'm thinking like $5,000 or whatever we can squeeze. It's really important to our community, since we have a large concentration of people in the city. And obviously, you know, drug addiction, especially the harder drugs is, is a concern now, nowadays.
Thank you.
Pretty good list.
So we'll keep, we'll keep adding to this, and then I think if anyone has the, any comments, suggests, just email that to me, please.
Now, were any of these items already budgeted or were being planned to be budgeted? Because I assume some of them, it looked like I've seen them before, so.
There's been discussion on some of these in the past, but not identified some funding sources.
Okay.
And a lot of them are the capital approval programs.
Have been just placed in this?
For future, yeah.
And so when we were kind of looking at that beach warning system, that would kind of use data from the National Weather Service to, to talk about having a kind of a light system of, you know, instead of the flag system, this would be more automated. That was something we could potentially go for a grant from the Local Revenue Sharing Board. But it was, you know, with timing, it, it wouldn't be till next summer. So it was something where, there's some of these that if we try to, you know, we could try to push them forward this year, or potentially just, you know, wait for other funding sources. So there's, there's those types of considerations as well when looking at this list.
I don't remember, was there a timeframe we had to use this month?
I believe it's three years to commit it, is it?
You've got three years to obligate, and I think another two years to actually spend it, so there's, there's time. We haven't even got the second installment yet.
Three years from when, though? Like, when does it start?
I can get you the exact number. It started back, I think, when the money was dispersed. So I'd have to look at the final guidance to find out what the exact date is. Short of a big infrastructure project that is a few years out, we shouldn't have any difficulty getting any of those down.
I just wanted to make sure we don't spend it on anything stupid and then turn around, like demolish that, whatever we spent the money on, like the following year, you know what I mean?
Let's go to the MAPS Vision Plan update, if nobody has any more questions on the ARPA funds.
Thank you, Mayor. As Jeff mentioned, we've been talking about the school, and I think several council members kind of interested in an update on what's going on with the bond project for the schools. They provided this timeline to kind of go over, you know, where they are. So it's, right now, they're kind of in the process of that engineer architectural plan development. And they're looking to demolish the, the high school this summer. And then, you know, they've got the, the construction going on from basically starting, you know, fall 2022 to summer 2024, and then demolishing the Jefferson School in the spring 2025. So the one thing we've been grateful for, they've been very good about going over the plans with us. Like Jeff said, we learned some lessons from the high school. And I'll, actually, let's share that site plan. So this is kind of the, so six streets on top, you have Robinson on the, on the left. There were some issues with the crosswalks being very close to where the traffic was going to come out of the school. They kind of tilted the area to help lessen those conflicts. You can see kind of the place structure area. So we kind of went over some of the, those areas, the sidewalks. I think it's been, it's been helpful to take a look at this with them, and we're, we appreciate their willingness to, to talk through some of these. I think the, the sixth street they were having issues with on the south side, and they didn't want it so that people would drop off and kind of hinder traffic. So they kind of tightened it up and made it so that if you don't have that same wide area that was there previously. Sean and Jeff, did you want to talk about this at all?
The only thing I'd probably mention is the separating of the drop-off areas from the bus. There's a separate bus loop, and there's a separate drop-off area, which I think is what some of the discussion advice.
Can you send that to us?
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about the property, where Jefferson School is, and what, what they can be persuaded to do with it? And if they have a solid plan yet for it?
So there's been discussions with the land bank at the county. And there is a potential savings that, you know, if they donate the land to the land bank and do the demolition, that could save them that $400,000 that they wouldn't have to repay the bond for. So I know there's been some discussions of what to do in that area, but I think the city's very interested in, you know, doing some single-family housing there. You know, their plan. So we're still kind of, we've talked to them about that a little bit.
We'll keep talking because I think we really need it. I think it would be a plus to the schools, too, just to have families in there with more children.
I will make a point where, if you're wondering why it's taking them to the summertime for the demolition, it's because the elevators are connected into the demolition piece, and they can't get rid of the elevators during the school year. So that's why they're waiting for the summertime, and that's, that's the, the reason why. Because you would think they would have done the demo right away, but they can't until school lets out, and then they can get that demo done and then replace the elevator, so that they.
Yep, they've been talking about that for eight years. Every, every couple of years, they talk about demolishing the building, and they bring up the elevator.
Right. Well, that's why they're waiting for the summer, so.
Right, that's pretty.
They're waiting for the summers over.
Yep.
Yep.
How come somebody couldn't have come up here and represented this to us? Because, I mean, just looking at this.
It's hard to read.
Oh, buses and all that all over the place. I think that would have been nice to have somebody up here presenting it.
So that is still a draft. It was something we asked, Spicer works with them. They did grant permission today for that. So it's still, it's not finalized, but we did appreciate them sharing that with us. They did give us this. I, I told them I would share it with council. They said if, if they want, if more information is needed, they could come in as well.
We did share this with all the parents, too, already.
Okay.
I just find this particular one kind of hard. This one, they've done this version a couple of times. I just find it really hard to like, okay, when is that? Where's that line go to? It's just kind of hard to follow. Do you, did they say anything about it being a challenge to get bids on this stuff? Seeing as how that's going to be a problem in other areas? Do you think they're going to have a problem getting bids on this?
Well, the, with COVID, it's, it's hurt all the construction industries above what we talked about for paving. So, yeah, they absolutely are having, their estimates are going up, and they're concerned about sourcing everything.
Yeah. And materials, too? Is that an issue as well?
Steel is what, 30 or 35% in the last six months.
Steel, lumber, copper, PVC, everything is across the board.
As we get closer to budget session, I'm sure they'll come in and, and talk to us about what they would like to see from the city, as they always have in the past, at least. And they talk about the pool, and maybe we could combine that.
Okay, I'll bring it up to them. Thank you.
You guys have anything else? Looking for other others.
Are you on others?
Yeah. Other others. Go ahead.
I don't have any.
Take a look. A while, but maybe last year. I don't know, somebody did a presentation on the broadband study.
Oh, that was Steve Bostner.
Yeah. Did that go anywhere, or is it just?
It's, it's called, it's in a committee called the Manastee. And they're still kind of thinking about how to move forward, because what they'd like to do is have contributions from different areas in the county to do a feasibility study. I think that's where they are. But with Spectrum coming in and saying that they're going to play a lot of cable, hybridic cable throughout the county, at least that's going to take care of part of the problem.
Are they, though?
Well, they said they had a 10-year plan, but they were going to beat that. I, I'm just, I'm trying, I'm doing this all from memory. But, yeah, they gave quite a presentation to the county commissioners about six months ago about coming in and doing.
Just wondering if it just went away.
No, I can't, it's, it's still out there.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
Nothing?
You have nothing?
Not for the, not for the council. Well, I do, but it's not.
Are you on positive? I mean, Mr. Rob, okay. I have further. How about you, Mr. Campbell?
There was one, I think, in meeting with Councilmember Sullivan, there was, talk about a sign ordinance revision, I think a while back, and it seems like the one topic was kind of LED lights in the window, that rope lighting. Was there any other topic or item to be kind of included in a sign ordinance update? I wanted to give some direction to that group.
I, I think that we just talked about, like, I think the last, I think it was like a year ago, or two years ago, or, I don't even know. I feel like I've been sitting here forever. I think he talked about, like, coming down 31, like, having it, having something in the ordinance where the signs aren't massively big in the brightness. Yeah, something like that needed to be put in the ordinance, so that new buildings coming in, they don't have the big neon lights, and I can't think of the word that he used. Yeah, something with, the signs had to be a certain height, certain brightness, and all along, like, everyone.
Okay. That corridor, okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
Jeff, are you going to do anything with those puddles? I noticed today, although we were coming around the curves on 31 from the north, you fixed some of them, some of them were fixed, but they're starting to really get big again.
The warm weather we've had, like, today and tomorrow, and a little bit yesterday, is the absolute worst for the pavement. So, yeah, we'll be chasing fouls for a couple of months now.
They're in all those curves.
Yep.
I got one more, just a reminder for people.
Sure.
We're running out of, you know, for the community at large, we're running out of time for people to get their dumpsters enclosed. That, I believe, is, they're supposed to be done by June, and I haven't seen a whole lot of work. The city is in good shape. I mean, we have the Taj Mahal dumpster corrals, and, but, but there's, you know, again, there's a lot of others out there that have, you know, they've had two years, and we're down to, you know, ticking off the last, you know, four months or so before it's a requirement.
I do got another one. Sorry.
That's okay.
The family video that sold, and I know that they had a, Mike and I talked about this. They had, they have a dumpster behind there that needs to be enclosed, and they have till June to enclose it. But he said, I recall that he said if the building sold before that, and we kind of laughed about it, that it wasn't going to sell, but it actually did, they would have to enclose it sooner. And I think Zach is going to check on that, so they, they have a timeframe. They've got to enclose it now instead of before June. Because the building changed hands.
As part of their acumen for the CFO?
If the ordinance changes hands before then, then they have to enclose it.
Before they're allowed to occupy?
Yes.
Okay.
They don't have the, they don't have that timeframe of June anymore.
Okay, I'll follow up with Zach and Mike. Okay. I'll talk to them about it. Thank you.
Leave anybody out. Heather, do you have anything?
Nothing, your other.
Lucas, do you have anything? Yeah?
Nothing further.
Ed, Fred?
Just want to say that we had the first round of stakeholder meetings on the Ramstone Master Plan, and those went very well. They were going to try to be here in person, but I had to, it hurt a little bit. There'll be some more next week, so you're going to start. next week, so you're going to start building the building back.
Okay. Our chief.
Yeah, you'll be seeing an email come out from me regarding promotion for a captain position. We're looking at doing a penny here Tuesday evening, just a little bit before council meeting, so I'll give you all an email, and those who attend would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, thank you.
Motion?
That's it, we're done.